All right, welcome everybody to the 2021 Talmadge School Board Candidates Forum. Thank you everyone for coming and special thanks to Mr. Wood who stepped out, who allowed us to have this forum tonight. My name is Chad Davis with Dove Audio Visual and it's an honor to sponsor tonight's event. And I want to thank all of our candidates for being here. Can we give them a round of applause? Very grateful that all five of them agreed to do this tonight. And then last but not least Mia Hurst, our senior class president, who's going to be our host for tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mia.
Thanks Chad. It's an honor to be a part of this event and I'm looking forward to meeting all of the new school board candidates. First, a couple of housekeeping notes. We're asking each of the candidates to be very brief and concise answering each question in approximately one minute. The seats next to me have been randomly selected. The first question will start with the first person on the left and the second person to the left will answer the second question and so on. And now I have the honor of introducing to you the five candidates. Incumbents Mark Fairhurst and Chris Taiwan, who will be facing challengers Brian Headley, Todd D. Lowry, Megan Thompson. These five candidates are vying for three open seats. Rick Keller did not file a petition for his seat. And with that being said, let's dive into our first question. Please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for the school board.
Hello, everybody. My name is Brian Headley. First, I just want to say thank you Chad Davis and Dove Audio for arranging all of this and thank you Mia for hosting everything. For those who don't know me, I am a Talmadge, I've been in Talmadge for eight years. I have two children, they are in the fourth grade and kindergarten this year. I have been a volunteer for Talmadge Little League for a little over five years now. I am a registered nurse in the emergency department. I also work in the ICU and occasionally the PACU. I am also an instructor at Stark State Akron campus for the LPN program. Reasons for me running for Board of Education mostly was wanting to get involved. I wanted some fresh eyes, nothing against anybody on the board now, but I have kids in the system. I want to keep growing with those kids. I want to see what they can develop into and how I can make things better for them and better for kids to come after that. And hopefully make, help Talmadge continue to grow in the direction that has been and kind of tweak anything that we might feel needs tweaked.
Thank you.
Turn on my microphone. Here we go, sorry about that. My name is Mark Fairhurst. I'm current board member here with the Talmadge City Schools, have been doing it for seven years and really enjoy the opportunity and the chances that I've had and the people that I've had to meet. On the home front, I'm married, my wife is Janet. I've been married 44 years, moved into Talmadge in 1989, raised two children. They went through the Talmadge City system here. They're up and out of my house and they have a family and children of their own. In fact, one of those grandkids in a couple of years will be taking her first steps in these classrooms somewhere. So I'm pretty excited about that. I am on the working front, currently working with a local nonprofit. It's a children's charity for orthodontic care oral health education. And it takes me into an area of about five counties wide. I get to work with 50-plus schools. So I get a pretty up-close, personal contact with a lot of teachers, counselors, nurses in the area. And I am able to see firsthand what's working and what's not working in a wide variety of schools in this area. I'm able to bring that back to the school board, share that, and it becomes kind of a best practice as we go forward trying to tackle and wrestle through questions. And I see my time is up, so I'm going to be quiet now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening and thank you Chad and Mia for having us this evening. My name is Megan Thompson and I'm thrilled for the opportunity to run for the Talmadge School Board. I'm a 1998 graduate of Talmadge High School and I completed all my years of schooling here in Talmadge City Schools. I'm the daughter of Chris Thompson. She was a retired, or she is a retired fifth grade teacher from Monroe Elementary and she was the recipient of the Outstanding Educator Award in 2012. My father is Dennis Thompson, a proud Talmadge business owner that continues to be a staple in our community and a past city councilman. I attended Ohio University and earned a bachelor's degree in marketing and a sales certificate. I'm currently the vice president at my father's insurance agency, Thompson &amp; Hummel Insurance. I am the Talmadge Chamber of Commerce President. I am the Talmadge Elementary PTA President. I am a trustee on the Talmadge Foundation and a member of the 2021 City Charter Commission. But most importantly, I am the mother of a third and fifth grader here at TES. I'm dedicated to continuing to make our schools the best in the area. I'm running for school board so I can be the voice of the parents, the community, and your children and help create the Talmadge way.
Good evening, everybody. Chris Taiwan, thank you everybody for being here and for setting this up. Been a resident here for, in Talmadge for 24 years. It's my second term that I'm on the school board and I, the school board and especially the schools have been just amazing for my kids. Both my kids are graduates from Talmadge and my wife is also a graduate. I won't mention her year that she graduated, she'd kill me and I wouldn't be married for 35, 36 years, right? But I'm involved with my church next door here at Talmadge Jeluthern Church. I own a business with 11 employees and I actually have interns from the high school that we employ through the summer and some of them actually stay on and work full-time for us. So we really have a good time with that. The schools have been amazing. We've got great teachers and the excellence has really been something that has been really near and dear to me, just to see what they've done for my wife and my kids. And I want to make sure that that excellence continues and people say, well, Chris, why do you want to be on the school board? It's like, I want to keep that going and they've been good to me. I want to give back to the community and serve with all I can to ensure that, you know, years to come that these kids are going to be well taken care of. So, thank you.
Say if I turn mine on, does that turn yours off? All right. Thank you everyone for being here. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about all these things and I think we're going to take some questions later as well. My name is Todd Lowry. I have been a resident of Talmadge for most of my 42 years, also went through the entire Talmadge City School System. Part of why my parents moved to Talmadge years ago was because of the strength of the schools, right? That's, the schools play such an integral role in the community itself and why you choose where to live, that I think it's an important focus that, that, not that it needed some attention, but I thought there was an opportunity for me to give it some attention, right? Essentially, my, my goal with running for school board and why I wanted to do it were twofold. Understanding the importance of the school systems for the community and wanting to make sure that they continue to be strong, our kids are well taught, you know, we're creating leaders for the future, right? The other part was a desire to give back. I grew up in a, in a household where both my parents give very selflessly. My dad was on school board for, I think it might have been 11 years. And I've just seen that level of service and have figured out that it's time for me to step up and give back to the community. And this was the way I chose to, to partake in that.
Thank you guys. So question two. What do you see as the school board's roles and responsibilities? This time we'll start with Mr. Fairhurst.
School board's responsibilities, right now primarily, I really need to say that I work for you. That's my job. And I am really a representative and a conduit between the community and the school administration and the teachers here on campus. My job is assisting both groups to communicate back and forth and understand each other for the betterment of the students. Specifically, the major role, the major job of the school board is to hire superintendent and to hire the treasurer. Our job is to hire the very best person we can find, put them in a position so that they can run this campus, run this district, and then quite literally get out of their way, to tell you the truth. We're there to help them and support them in any way that we can, bring to them the information that we find throughout the community. And again, all for the betterment of the students, whatever that takes to make the best student possible. And I'm out of time again. It's hard, it's a lot, it's a lot to talk about and a lot to cover and 60 seconds doesn't even make a dent. But, go ahead.
Thank you. I believe the school board represents the community's voice in public. Public education, providing our citizens governance and knowledge of the community's resources and needs. And board members are the policymakers closest to the student. The school board sets the standards for achievement in the school district incorporating the community's view of what students should and be able to accomplish at each grade level. The school board is accessible to everyone in the community and is accountable for the performance of the schools in the district. It is the community members' right as a voter to select new board members who will work diligently to provide an opportunity for students to receive a high-quality education which will enable them to succeed whether they are employed, enlisted, or enrolled in college at the end of their time at Talmadge City Schools. I believe I am that candidate.
School board's role, we have two very important jobs, or two, well, the main job is, is to hire two people, Mark touched on it, is the superintendent and the treasurer. It all revolves around that. And the superintendent and the treasurer fiscally keep us responsible and then we make sure and we follow up to make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to do. And then the superintendent ensure, we empower them actually to make sure that all the staffing needs are filled. And when any of those things are not being met, we, we look for ways to make that corrected. And if it doesn't work, then we fire, find the right people to make the changes to make that happen. So support is the big thing. We've got a great staff and a great admin team and we get out of the way, we ask questions, we challenge when we need to. But they're empowered and that's what we hire them to do.
Schools, school board's roles and responsibilities, I tend to agree with Mr. Taiwan and Mr. Fairhurst. It's basically to step in if we need to, if things aren't operating properly. But we also trust the superintendent and the treasurer to, to help things operate properly, right? If there's, if there's division or something that we don't like, that's when we would step in and try to implement some changes. But Talmadge runs pretty smoothly, right? We have good people in place right now. Our main job is to support them, right?
Thank you.
Just to kind of piggyback off of all of the candidates and kind of what they said, ultimately I feel like the board's responsibility to review, evaluate policies, budgeting, finance, instruction, education, and how it's implemented through all grade levels, through K through 12. But on a more personal note and more, what I feel is more meaningful to the community themselves is being a contact point and a voice, not just for students, but for our teachers and our staff and anybody else who's involved in the administration. I don't think we just oversee the schools and the students and how we implement their policies and their education, but we need to make sure that our teachers are happy, that we're not putting them in positions that make it difficult for them to teach or make it awkward for them in any situation, whether it be classroom size or subject matter or what have you. So I like to make sure that we're, I think the board should be a voice, not just for students, but for the community, for the teachers, for the staff, to make sure that we're all cohesive and we're that one Talmadge unit.
Okay. There are currently as many as 29 students in elementary classes. In what ways will you address large teacher-to-student ratios at our fine foundational grades?
Thank you. I remember this happening when I was in Talmadge Schools. There could be a graduating class that could fluctuate by 20 or 30 children every few years. Right now, we currently have two large classes in the elementary school. The class of 2031 and the class of 2032. They have approximately 25 to 30 more students than the other four classes. If you look at the average student-to-homeroom teacher ratio though, for all grade levels at TES, it's actually 23 to 1. Class sizes can fluctuate and we can be assured that the administration is closely following these numbers and trends. With 21st century learning, there are a lot of large classrooms that combine classes together with multiple educators. I believe that 21st century learning addresses this and it allows our class sizes to be bigger with our state-of-the-art classrooms.
We have these great new schools and the collaborative learning with co-teaching and you're going to have naturally bigger classes, but the teachers and the support's going to be there. And listening to the staff, if they need extra help, then we'll figure out a way to get them help to make sure that the proper care and the education and the kids are learning what they need to learn. But yeah, we listen hard and long. Thanks.
All right. So obviously it would always be ideal to have less students per teacher, more one-on-one time. That would always be the goal. We're also always going to have to balance fiscal responsibility. There's going to be a cost-benefit analysis to everything. So the, the easy answer is, let's have more teachers to support those students and let's find a way to do it within the budget, right? Our goal's always going to be to work within the confines of what we have to work with and do our very best for the students.
Thank you. I think when we look back at class size right now, it's kind of hard to look backwards at anything, especially with our new establishments that we have. This is our first real go at these classroom sizes and these teachers. I think it's new for the teachers. The plan was implemented, it was great, it sounded great on paper, and I think that we're kind of learning as we go. So listening to our teachers is going to be benefit to us. Are they happy with their classroom sizes? Are they, do they need to downsize? Are the students benefiting from those? And then if we want to look at solutions for the classroom size being too long, I think that we need to take a look at making sure that we're maximizing the space that we do have in the school. Back when everything was, the year before and everything was spread out, we utilized every corner of the building to make sure we had social distancing. And are we still utilizing every single classroom, the preschool area? Are we using all that space? If we're not, why? And is there room for us to grow if this is a problem for our teachers?
It's a great question that you raise because it's important. It's all about the kids. And at first glance, when you see a room full of kids, you kind of panic a little bit because ultimately the best thing would be one-on-one, but that, that really doesn't happen. Right now, what's really nice, what's really wonderful about our district is that the buildings that you are in tonight, buildings that have just opened up recently, they were designed to be flexible. And that's really important. Right now, we're probably sitting at about 80 something, something percent, between 80 and 85% of our buildings, our campuses. When you take that 15% or so growth that we have elbow room in the classes and you compare it to what's happening in the community at large, and especially, I say that because there's about 200-some houses that are being built up, the Ripley Farms right now. And plus another 40 or 50 that are coming online scattered all around the, the city here. The projected growth in the city alone, if you stretch it out to year 2030, is about 5%, maybe 6%, 7% growth. It's steady, it's not large. When you compare that growth of the community to the capacity that we have in our schools, as you're addressing, the rooms are built to be flexible. And we have the capacity to use, or put the kids in place where they need to be so that we can grow with each bubble that comes along. And if we are so blessed that people continue finding Talmadge, a great place to, to live and work and raise their families here, our buildings will be able to expand. We also have, that people don't talk about too much anymore is David Bacon over there, which also gives us a little bit of extra elbow room that we can expand into in a moment's notice. And so we have room to grow, we have the capacity to handle our children because that's ultimately the most important thing that we can do right now. Thank you.
Thank you. What, if any, measurable goals should the district have around equity and inclusion?
All right, I'm up. All righty. Equity and inclusion, it's, it's, it's really important to teach values to our children and to have, you know, these young kids that come in here, these formidable little minds, you know, we have them for just a short time. So I think it's important that we include, include them all and it doesn't matter, we look at them as students and children. We don't give them a label, we don't give them a color, they're children. And they're here to learn and that is our job, is to, to educate these, these children. And as far as the, the numbers and measurable goals, again, that's listening to our admin and our staff and our teachers, what's required, what do we need, how do we support you to make sure that we're including everybody and, and we're meeting what we need to do and exceeding our goals and exceeding those expectations.
All right. So I'm going to be honest, I don't really know how you measure equity and inclusion. I think it's important that we give all of our students an equal opportunity to learn, that's what they're here for. I don't know exactly how you measure it, right? I believe Talmadge currently does an excellent job of including everyone. If we're not, then that would obviously be something we'd want to address. I just don't care to, to put it on a counter in any fashion.
Thank you. I think that measurable goals for that would be very broad. I think as, as a world right now, things are developing, new, new identities are coming out and it's a challenge for everyone to try and identify with themselves or with specific types of groups. And I think that one of our measurable goals can be making sure that we identify those types of, those types of identities, make sure we identify them, and that we are also retaining that diverse student body and staff, teaching administration. And then also making sure that we promote equality across all of those spectrums, but also making sure that they're, the students are comfortable coming to us once we do have that and we've identified them, making sure that we have our counselors and we have that open ear for anybody who might be, might be uneasy about coming about in terms of their identity and how they're feeling included. And then making sure that we follow up with what they think we could do best and try to implement the best that we can to make sure everybody feels equal.
Again, good question, tough, tough subject to, to address in some ways. However, it's very interesting, when I have been a part of some of the committee meetings that have happened over the past several years, this subject has been addressed over and over and over again and it's finally beginning to wash itself out here a little bit. You heard a little bit about it actually not too long ago with Mrs. Davis when she was talking about her curriculum. But within the, the new system, that's the new directional system that has been created here for this, our, our school district, the very first point that they bring out is everyone, or excuse me, empowered every day. And that means every child, every student that's here has the opportunity to jump in and be a part of something if they have a desire to do so. We will find a way for them. The staff and the teachers and the counselors will find a way for them to be involved and included in it. It's, if we do it and we do it right and it's in planning now as a five-year strategy, we'll be able to move all of these children from empowering them to be better students and better adults, we'll be able to move them into a collaborative effort that will be supported through the communities, the teachers, corporations, the businesses that are here in the community. And ultimately, the final goal will be to, to bring these kids to the end goal and that is to walk them across the stage in the spring and each one of them will be empowered to be enrolled or enlisted or employed somewhere in the community as functioning adults.
Thank you Mia. First, I'd like to applaud our district's strategic plan because that, it is actually addressed, it addresses this exact topic. And the district wants to provide engaging and academically challenged experiences in an environment that is inclusive, safe, positive, and fun for our children. The district wants to provide all students with opportunities that encourage smart behavioral decisions in order to grow academically, artistically, and athletically while ensuring their social and emotional well-being. This will be accomplished and it can be measured, and here's how. It can be measured by raising staff awareness and effectiveness, building cultural literacy and curriculum projects, addressing disproportionate student populations, recruiting diverse staff members, expanding the Bridges Over Poverty Program to engage the Talmadge community and local businesses, increasing career awareness and opportunities for all students and families through improved CTE evaluation, provide alternative educational options for all students, including Talmadge Online, College Credit Plus classes, and internships, and create productive learning days with a focus on improving students' schedules, nutrition, busing, and academy time. Thank you.
Thank you. What is your view on the critical race theory and should it be taught in the classroom?
All right. So let me start with, I don't believe it's currently taught. I don't know that it's been proposed to be taught in Talmadge. So I don't know if it's a huge issue on our plate currently. If it, if it arose, if it came up, from what I understand from it, I would not support it. The way I understand it is it basically wants us to look at everything, everything through the lens of race and I think that's divisive. I think it's the exact opposite of what we want to do. Organizations that I've been involved in historically, where different races came together really well, whether it was sports teams or the military or whatever, it's always a focus on not identifying by race. It's by actually coming together just as people, right? So if the goal of critical race theory is to actually look at it through the lens of race and separate by that, then I, I think that's the exact opposite direction we should be going with it.
It's a, it's a sticky question and it's a very good question. So in terms of critical race theory, I think that like most ideas, it has good intentions. I just think that in the wrong hands, without strict regimen and implementation, that it can go down a slippery slope. And I don't think that it would be a good idea to teach our children that they could, they have the potential to be inherently racist or they have an unknown bias towards particular races. So I don't agree with critical race theory. I do think that it has good intentions. But ultimately, I feel like we're a strong community and I think that we need to work towards cohesion regardless of your race, your sex, your gender, your age, your physical or mental abilities. And I, I think that any type of focus that takes away from that and starts to tell one group of people that they're different because of this, I think that's heading in the wrong direction for the Talmadge system.
I'll chime in and keep that kind of, that thought and that conversation going. I do know for a fact that we do not teach critical race theory at Talmadge right now. It is not part of the Ohio State curriculum. And if it were, and if it were forced on us to do that, then we'd have to sit down and it would not be my opinion. It would be a, an opinion of, a collective opinion to decide how to address it, what to do with it because it is a very touchy subject. As far as I'm concerned, history is what history is, good, bad, or indifferent. You tell the whole story as best as you can, as well as you can, to the students. And if, if there's further interest and they want to dive deeper into a particular subject, a particular part of history, be it American history, European history, great, so be it. We'll figure out how to do that. Personally, I, I think it's just a touchy, touchy subject.
I'd like to echo what Mark said. Right now CRT is not currently included in the Ohio learning standards for students and Talmadge teachers base their instruction and their learning objectives on the Ohio learning standards for their respective content areas. If Ohio learning standards change, then like Mark alluded to, it would take the board to come together to make that decision.
We don't, yeah, we do not teach it here and I don't think race should be an issue. We're all students, we're all people. So we're not doing it now and since we're in a public area here, should it be taught in the classroom? Absolutely not. And if it is brought to the schools, I would fight that we do not include it. And in the past, when we had lost our levy or just some funding that, that wasn't coming together, I actually met with our state representative out of Columbus to see if we couldn't change something to get some things back. So I would take that same effort and notify the people in Columbus and let our voices be known that, that we are not accepting this, nor do we want to teach it, so. to teach it, so.
Thank you. We received the most questions from the public related to COVID, and we chose the three that encompassed the majority of the concerns related to COVID-19 to ask the candidates. Our first COVID question is, what are your positions on the current COVID protocol in place for Talmage City School Districts, mask-wearing, quarantining, vaccinations, et cetera? Given the current data, what changes, if any, would you make to the policies?
All right, what everybody's been waiting for. So being a nurse, I have a lot of medical involvement. I, of course, have my personal opinions, but I think it is important for any board member to make sure that they take away their personal opinions and decide what is best for the student body as a whole. I think that student safety and student and staff safety is my number-one priority, but a second close for that is making sure these kids stay in school and in person for their learning. I don't think there's a single family in this community who is ready for distance learning again, whether it be from a social standpoint, whether it be from a financial standpoint, or just having your kid at home every day. I don't think anybody is ready for that. And if wearing masks is going to slow the spread of this disease and decrease the amount of people who have to be quarantined because of close contact and bring those numbers down and keep these kids in person, then I am for masks. And I think that our current policy and our current board members have taken all the information that they could possibly have to make a difficult decision.
Well said. Hard to argue with a nurse, so I have to be careful here. But I will tell you that I am not a doctor. I will tell you that my personal opinion in this particular subject is not as important as the collective opinion, once again. When you ask me what do I think, I have to step back and look at the three pillars that we have put together in this school district, and those three pillars are safety, education, and financing. Safety's on top because that's the number-one thing that we always think about and we always talk about when it comes to our students and our children. I will do and take information from any one of a collective group of people. Right now, Mr. Wood has talked about, even this evening, talking about his partners that he talks about in a collective way, which are the local area schools, districts right around us, specifically the six that we call the Sixth District, which Cog Falls, what is it, Cog Falls, Stowe, Hudson, Kenton, Woodridge, and Talmage. Those six get together and talk almost every day, discussing best practices, what's going on, what's not working, what have you. That collective mindset right there makes a lot of decisions. They take their thoughts. They bounce it off of what's happening here in the Summit County Health Department in conjunction with what's happening coming up out of Columbus. And through there, as you alluded to, they make terribly, terribly hard decisions on what to do. I have to stand by what is happening on a collective basis. People like it. Some people hate it, but collectively, for the ultimate safety of our children, you know, I think we're heading in a good direction. We're keeping our schools open. We're doing good things. People are actually looking at the Talmage City School District as a leader because we are doing things so well, and so I feel very proud to be a part of that team.
As everyone has already alluded to, this is a very difficult and sensitive topic. I myself am vaccinated, and when the vaccination is approved for my children, they're both under 12, I will be getting them vaccinated as well. I believe the safety and the health of our students and staff is absolute number-one priority right now, and as it stands in the current environment, I do believe that the policy in place is the right one to keep our students and staff protected and keep our students and staff in school every day, five days a week.
I echo everybody else. Safety is number-one. Steve and the rest of the staff, they monitor this daily, and it's like trying to pin a cloud to the wall. It's constantly changing. There's so much information out there. And, you know, we believe that we're doing the very best thing to keep the kids safe. I think ultimately what we're doing, I think the kids, it should be up to the parents ultimately. If they want to wear the masks, let them wear the masks. If they don't want to wear the mask, don't let them wear the mask. But that's just the way it is, and the state mandates are telling us what we need to do. So number-one is keep them safe and keep them healthy, keep them in the schools. So that's where we are.
All right, so let me start with my personal opinion, although some of the other people said it doesn't matter. It is what it is when you're in this kind of position and you're making decisions. You're gonna make decisions that you think are wise, right? So everything, going back to cost-benefit analysis, everything has a cost and a benefit, right? So I am not in favor of mandatory wearing of masks. If you look at studies, it's hard for them to get data that's objective. The most objective ones I could find show that maybe it slows things, the spread about 20%, right? The concern is people that would look at, oh, we're wearing masks, so we're safe, right? Treat it as if you weren't wearing masks. If it becomes a mandatory mask thing, if that's what we have to do, whether I support mandatory masks or not, I support Steve Wood. I support his decisions and the difficulty of decisions he has to make, right? I think he's making decisions that he thinks are good for our district and the students and all that. I just would caution people to put too much faith in the masks, right? Full Army MOP gear is only about 80% effective. The cloth mask is probably about 20%. And if you weren't gonna let your son or daughter go visit grandma and grandpa because everyone's not wearing masks, don't let them visit grandma and grandpa if they are.
Thank you. Where do you get your information and updates about COVID, and what sources would you use to decide if masks in school should be mandatory?
Mike, Mike, Mike. Thank you. Where do I get my information about COVID and updates and information? Again, once again, collectively from the group that I've talked about here just recently because they are arm-wrestling with it every day, just like all of us. Primarily for myself, I have tried to turn away from the talking heads and the big, bold headlines that we see every day. I've taken the time to start reading the New England Journal of Medicine, Lancet, Nature and Science, because they tend to be a rudder in the water when it comes to medical questions, medical issues. And while it's very, very boring to read, the conclusions are rather concise and to the point. That said, I still fall back and say, I'm not a doctor, and I really have to rely on the collective opinions of the people around me who are better at it than I am, including Summit County Health Department, my doctor, my dentist, now a nurse. And we're all kind of sort of in the same area, but again, it comes down to making whatever is necessary to keep our children safe, the number-one priority in this community. That's what I'm gonna support. That's what I'm gonna argue for going forward.
As Mark said, he's not a doctor. I'm an insurance agent, so there's not really much I know when it comes to the medical community, so I do trust our medical professionals. I trust the Centers for Disease Control and the Summit County Health Department when I'm looking for guidance, and it is their job to provide us with that medical information that is needed to keep our students and staff safe and healthy. As Steve alluded to in the meeting this afternoon, this evening, he was on the phone with the Summit County Health Department and Governor DeWine, so you have to trust that what he's doing and who he's speaking to, medical professional-wise, is the right thing to do.
I rely on our team, our superintendent Steve. He does a phenomenal job talking every day with the CDC and the different agencies and the other schools as what's going on. And I do read some things from the Cleveland Clinic and what they publish and speaking with other doctors and nurses. I've got a soon-to-be daughter-in-law, I think, that is also a nurse, and get information from them as well. You know, we have choices. The families have choices, and it's up to them, but that's where I get my information.
So I actually get a daily email from my company that sort of gives like a wide array of how things look, and they try to present it without a slant, right? And so I also go out to maybe some of the talking heads. I try to see what both sides are saying, and that goes for any issue. So I'm a conservative at heart, right? But not to a fault, right? So Mayor Grimm's in the audience. When I was younger, I actually voted for Mayor Grimm. I voted for Mayor Klein. I'm not Republican, and that's it. I'm sort of trying to have an open mind, and this is a nonpartisan position. We should be coming forth as just, you know, people trying to make decisions that are wise for our children. So in that vein, in that thought, I might go to Fox News for a little bit, and then I might look at CNN, and I might read some NPR, and I try to see what all the sides are saying and try to read the slant, right? I know when Rush Limbaugh would go too far to the right, and I know when MSNBC would be too far to the left, and sometimes I think it's good to take in the whole array and then make your decisions based off that, see what both sides are saying on an issue.
So I look to primarily the Ohio Department of Health, the Summit County Health Department, the CDC, their governing bodies, and that's where I get most of my information and the statistics, but I also like to look at a local level. I like to attend the board meetings, whether that be via Zoom or in person, and I like to see where we're standing as a district in terms of our numbers and what we're seeing in terms of children. And I like to also look at surrounding communities, but I also like to keep an open mind in terms of what our district can offer our children. Our buildings are a lot different than some of these surrounding districts. We have open airflow. We have other options. And as it was evidenced by Mr. Wood's presentation in previous meetings, is that we didn't start like everybody else did at the beginning. We took into account those types of things. We started mask optional because we have these liberties. And then also, as a nurse, I too get a daily email about where we stand in the state of Ohio, and as a nurse, I have trusted these governing bodies for over 15 years, being involved in healthcare, to not only keep me safe, but my patients safe and those who surround me. So I would be doing them injustice to not turn to them for that type of information now.
Thank you. Do you support mandatory COVID vaccinations for students and/or staff?
Thank you. I believe the safety and the health of our students, again, is our absolute number-one priority. The board and the administration, I believe, is doing the right thing with what our current plan is due to the current environment. I believe they are closely monitoring the situation and continuing to follow the CDC, Summit County Health Department, and the advice of the medical professionals, as it goes back to the last question. So at this point in time, I believe how we are handling the situation is the right way to handle the situation.
Well, to the question, do you support mandatory COVID vaccinations for students and staff? I do not.
I thought yours might be short like that. I also do not support it. It's pretty clearly and simply, I support getting vaccinated. I'm vaccinated. I think medically, it's the sound thing that we should all be doing. I am 1 million percent, if that's even technically possible, against mandatory vaccinations. That's your choice as a person and shouldn't be forced on anyone.
I too am against mandatory vaccination for students and staff alike, which may be surprising to people because I am a nurse. I do encourage anyone who is able to be vaccinated to get the vaccine. It has been shown to slow the spread, to minimize the effects of the disease when you do contain it, and hopefully that you don't. And although we're a strong community, I don't think that another wave, like I said, of that distance learning is going to be beneficial for us. So doing your best to get to that point would be great, but I wouldn't stand for mandating it. I shouldn't say I wouldn't stand. That's kind of bold. I wouldn't approve mandating that for students and teachers alike. I think that we have other means. Our masks do help slow the spread. It's not a substitution, but that does help. And I think that while we, as a country, ease into approval of all the vaccines and more information comes out, I think that we can then begin to look at them, and those who have their concerns or are offput by it can then hopefully be put at ease, and we can all hopefully one day be vaccinated by choice.
Once again, I'm still not a doctor, and so I always have to take that step back and take a look at the bigger picture. Overall, it just doesn't make sense to me to do an across-the-board mandate of something like a vaccine for everyone because all of a sudden it doesn't take into account people that may have allergies, cancers of some kind, diabetes, and what have you. When you do things like that without those considerations, you put those people at risk, and you're actually possibly doing them more harm than good, and so that's just somewhere we don't want to go. I go back to always the three pillars that we have here in our community, and that is safety, education, and the financing, and it's safety first. If by collective thought that it is the safest thing to do, you know, would be worth the conversation and consideration to take a look at it. But right now, based on what we're doing, following Mr. Wood's lead, and I would have to agree with everybody here, I don't think it's the right time to do that. No.
Okay. Moving on from COVID, we have two questions left before we open it up to the public. If you are watching online, feel free to type them into the Vimeo chat, and we'll do our best to get your questions asked. If you're here in person, please line up, and we'll rotate an onsite versus online question until our time is up. So the next question, what would you change about Talmage Schools and why?
Great question. Boy, we've done so much. I'm not a man of many words. I like to keep things simple, as you can tell, but what would I change? I thought long and hard on this. If possible, I'd like to see more staff hired of color. Okay, I think that would be something that we could challenge ourselves to do and fill that position or positions.
All right, so I probably did myself a disservice by not thinking long and hard about this. God, I love Talmage, and I love our schools, and I don't know that there's any specific change that I would be looking to implement day one. My goal on the school board is to support the current administration, the current teachers and the students in any way that I can, and I don't know that I'm looking to make any overreaching changes at this point in time.
So I'd like to go out and first say that our community is amazing. Our school system is amazing, and I'm very proud to be a part of this community. With that being said, I think it would be, and no offense, I think it would be foolish to say that there isn't anything to change. We always have room to grow. There's always a chance for improvement, and that no matter the scale, I think there's a lot of things that we could change. I think that one big thing that I would like to change is the overall communication in terms of the school system itself. From the outside, it appears to be, there appears to be a large disconnect between teachers and students and parents and board members alike, and it just doesn't seem like as a community, we're all on the same page when it comes to the students' education. So if there was anything that I could change, I would like to improve on that and be able to make decisions as, not only make decisions, but make accurate and informed decisions as a community to make sure that everybody has the right information and that we kind of elaborate on that cohesion, which is already great, but to kind of further it even more.
Very good. What would I change about Talmage City Schools? I'll be very blunt and say pretty much nothing. Again, I go back to my three pillars, safety, education, and financing. I take a look at safety, and I will tell you, over the past 18 months, Talmage school system has been a leading school district in the greater Akron area, greater northeastern Ohio area. People are looking to Mr. Wood and asking, what are you doing? How are you doing this? Because you're being very successful. So I feel very confident that the things that are going on right now in regard to safety for our students and our children are very, very good. You could cherry pick it to death, and you know, you could always find a half a dozen things that you might be able to do better, but in the whole of the day, keeping the children safe and doing what we are doing is working, and we're keeping the schools open, so I'm very satisfied with that. When you talk about the education, once again, Mrs. Davis was talking about the new five-year strategy. We are talking about turning the ship a little bit and moving from building facilities to building students. That is not an easy thing to do. It's like trying to turn a great big ship in a little pond. It's just a little bit at a time, and it takes time. We've been working on this five-year plan, this five-year strategy for several years, and it's working. It's beginning to take root, and kids are... It's beginning to take root, and kids are excited about it, the staff is excited about it, and so is the administration, because we've envisioned great things coming from this. When we talk about financing, Mr. Hosteller, oh my gosh, he is wonderful in what he has done for this community. We now stand in a position where we are well-financed for the next eight, nine, and with a little bit of hope and luck, maybe next 10 years. So financially, very, very sound right now. Safety, education, financing, we're in very, very good shape. I'm very, very proud, very pleased to be a part of this team.
Just to reiterate what some of the others said, I love this community. I grew up here. I'm back to raise my children here. I'm excited for them to graduate from Towhamage High School, just like I did. I don't think there's any changes that I would make right away. If changes do need to be made, it's not going to be up to me. It's going to be up to all of you. And the changes and improvements that you have to offer, I want to be that voice. I want to be the voice that can help those things get accomplished. I applaud our Gold Star education that we provide to our students and Towhamage City Schools. I will continue to improve our equity, our arts, our athletics, but I'm here to be your voice. And I was lucky enough to be a part of the committee that came up with our strategic plan, and I think it's great. It's going to help, like Mark said, put us where we need to go.
Thank you. What do you see as the biggest challenge for our school system in the coming years?
All right. So I think we touched on it when we were talking about the classroom size and the number of students and stuff like that. I think my biggest concern is that we properly utilize David Bacon and some of the flexibility that we have in these buildings to accommodate growing class sizes. I believe we originally wanted to have two elementary schools, and to figure out state funding, maybe that wasn't an option. So we may have settled to be able to implement the best version of what was available to receive matching funds, right? That's a concern for me, that we may not have as much flexibility as we have. We may not have as much as we need, and I'd like to maybe get out ahead of that, and, you know, let's address the concern before it's a serious concern, right?
So it's kind of hard to follow up that question with the question that we just answered before, and I think that I go back to that communication and that cohesion, at least from a social standpoint. So we are a strong community, and I'm proud of that, and I'm proud to be a part of that community. And I think that as the years come, we were hoping to get out of last year and kind of ease into something a little bit better. But I think that as the years come and as we're tried as a school district and as a community, the hardest thing is going to be able to keep that strength and keep our cohesion and our bond that we do have. Yeah, I think that's it for me.
Biggest challenge is something that I touched on a few minutes ago, and that is the new five-year strategy, our directional system, our portrait of a student. Because like I said, we have spent literally the last 15 to 20 years building facilities. We are now in a process of building students. And as I said, it's not an easy thing to do necessarily. I think that as our biggest challenge, to get everybody on board, teachers and staff, fully aware of what our plans are. While I have told you a couple of times tonight that we have three basic pillars: safety, education, and financing, again, as Mrs. Davis began to tell you about, there's actually six points to the strategic plan, four of which are coupled around education, and they will take the biggest amount of pulling and pushing to make success for our community. I congratulate you in what you're doing, because it is. It's a big, big challenge, and it's ahead of us. But it's exciting, it's worth it, and we owe it to our kids to keep going down this path, because we have great facility, and now with this strategic plan in place and the first few steps into it, we're going to be able to overcome that challenge. Again, I'm excited to be here. This is a wonderful time to be in Towhamage. We are ready for our next big jump up. Thank you.
I think it's extremely hard to say what our next biggest challenge was going to be. Two years ago, no one could have predicted COVID, but it has posed as one of the biggest challenges, if not the biggest challenge, that we have had to deal with. None of us, again, can predict that. But what I do know is that the board we're going to have and our superintendent, we will be able to overcome whatever sized obstacle it may be. And again, my number one priority is keeping our students and staff safe and healthy and being in school five days a week. And whatever challenges will be thrown at us, I know we'll be able to overcome them.
In the coming years, it's, I think it's communication. I think we need to continue communicating and getting the word out there. Brian echoed on that as well. And I think something else that continues, and Kurt's done an amazing job, is technology and how kids are learning today. We've built the 21st century learning environment with these new schools, but, you know, how do we continue to keep up with that excellence and making sure that we're getting the most out of the buildings to give the most to our children in the learning environment? So communication and technology, I think, are two big ones. But other than that, I mean, we are so blessed to be here, and it's really been an honor for me to serve these last seven and a half years, almost eight years, on the school board. It's been so rewarding to go through failed levees and failed bonds, and then to come back and, as a community, put these things back together, make it happen with some ideas of building a school. We've built a school, and they're amazing. So we've come a long way, and we've got a lot of work to do yet, but it's been an honor for me, and I hope I can continue to serve in this capacity.
Thank you, candidates. So this ends the first part of our forum, and now we'd like to open it up to the public. We have time for a few more questions. We did have some more questions from the public related to sports, staff, and real estate taxes, but we'd like to hear from the public. Does anyone have any questions that they'd like to ask?
I don't agree with it, you know, what our biggest challenges are. I think the biggest challenges are that our kids are being politicized and being used as pawns by some people. They're talking about things that shouldn't even be talked about at school. I keep hearing the word, "We should teach history," but according to whom? It's a trust factor with parents now, because, you know, I read one history book, says it one way, another one another way. The challenge will be that teachers not teach to hate America. That's what I'm hearing everywhere. "America sucks, and we've got to apologize for all our past. We're the greatest nation in the world to live." And I can tell you that as a former immigrant. The word equity and inclusion, there's no such thing as equity. There's no such thing as equal outcomes. There's equality under the law, but this room is an example that there's no such thing as equity. We're all different socioeconomic status. I drove a truck for a living. You're an AVA guy. But anyway, so when we say equity, what do we mean by that? They can be just empty words if we don't put, you know, some kind of teeth on that. But my question is, how are you, as a board, going to communicate to the curriculum coordinator and to the principal about these kind of teachings? If I write you a letter, what do you do with that letter? Do you send it to the curriculum coordinator? Do you send it to the teachers or principals? That's my question.
I guess I could take that as a board member. One, thank you again for stepping up here and being here tonight. I really do appreciate that. To answer your question specifically, I did receive your letter. Thank you very much. Immediately passed it on to my superintendent, Mr. Wood, with the intent of discussing it and talking about it, because, again, it's not my opinion. It's not his opinion. It's our opinion. We have to take a look at what you're talking about, because just because you're one person with one letter, there may be 150 people behind you and around you that have similar interests, similar ideas and thoughts, and we want to address it correctly. So to tell you otherwise would be a lie. We're taking your letter under consideration to share it within our team so we can get you a good answer. Not necessarily the right answer, but we're going to get you a good answer.
Who gets the letter? Does the curriculum?
Superintendent gets the letter.
Where does it go from there?
Superintendent will, again, the job of the board is to hire the very best person I possibly can. He is my lead dog. I give my information to him as I collect it through the community so that we don't have any miscommunication. Once I start handing things off to other people, that divides the room, and we don't want to do that. We have enough of that going on in the world today. So from him, he will bring it to his staff and his cabinet. Mrs. Davis is a part of his cabinet. So collectively, we're going to take a look at it and see what we can or cannot do to help you and help those other 150 or so people behind you.
Yeah, and that's why I'm concerned about that. When you get a letter, you pass it on to the principals, the coordinators, and those who are on the front lines that are...
No, we don't. It goes to the superintendent, so that it is always given in the same order each and every time. We don't divide. There's no way that that's good for anybody.
Got you. By the way, none of you have ever answered a single letter I've ever wrote in seven years.
You mind if I jump in for a minute? So I understand what he's talking about. You know, we send our children to school to learn, and it's really easy to teach algebra, because that's not divisive, right? It's harder to teach history, because like critical race theory and some of those other things, there's going to be different interpretations of things, right? So it's not always so cut and dry when you're going to take things that could have a political slant or things that have really different opinions. Like, you and I aren't going to argue about, you know, the Pythagorean theorem, unless one of us is just wrong, right? It's a little harder when you start dealing with things that people are going to have strong opinions about that are going to differ greatly, and we have to make sure that we're handling everyone's point of view and taking it into consideration and doing our very best to provide a safe place for our students to learn without too much of leaning too far left or leaning too far right.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the public? Okay, then we'll move on to the last three. What are your thoughts on getting quality substitutes when teachers need to be out, and do you think they are compensating fairly compared to surrounding districts?
I cannot elaborate, at least from a financial standpoint, as to what the substitutes get paid or where they're compensated in terms of and what they provide. I know that I have offered to volunteer my time to substitute. I haven't been taken up on the offer yet. But I think that the qualifications and the standards that are set by our district for what we look for in a substitute teacher, and then the curriculum that is, for lack of better terms, left behind by the primary teacher, as long as we continue to stay on track with our curriculum, our students are continuing to learn, I think that that is the goal that we should have for our substitutes. Again, I wish I could elaborate in terms of their compensation, but I'm not educated myself in terms of that department, so.
Substitutes are always interesting. According to my wife, she will tell you, we never have enough, because every once in a while, and not picking on anybody, but every once in a while, somebody, you know, has a toothache or has flat tire or whatever it is that keeps them from coming to school that morning, and my wife gets a call at 5:30 a.m. and says, "Hey, I won't be there." You know, "Your uncle, find somebody." And she does. It makes it tough. However, and that's the reality of it. It just, we're all human, things happen, and, you know, thankfully, as a team and as a group, we compensate. We figure it out. In regard to, you know, the cost and compensating fairly, I will tell you that the suburban schools don't pay as much as the urban center schools, because it's a harder, it's a harder district to teach in. It just is. And so they are paid a little bit more than coming out here to the suburbs. We are relatively equal to the surrounding suburbs, maybe a few pennies less overall, and it does hurt every once in a while. As far as getting more substitutes to come out and beyond that long laundry list, we'll take a little bit more communication and to places for retiring teachers, going to Stark State, going to the University of Akron to find some of the younger folks who are recent graduates who may be able to help us. Going into the corporate world, people who are close to retirement and have a little bit of extra time on their hands to bring them in to help our kids, even the Silver Sneakers that are here in our community. There are people within that crowd, while they are older, they are available and may be able to help. So I think it's a never-ending conversation to be had, but there are solutions that are out there and a part of the new five-year plan. That's going to be a part of it.
Thanks, Mark. I did speak with administration on this issue, and our substitutes make $95 a day, and after four consecutive days in the same room, they make $110 a day. And this was increased a few years ago based on our surrounding cities, and it is comparable to all the other districts that are in our county and in our area. The substitutes that my children have have always been great. One of them is the retired mayor of Monroe Falls, came back and wanted to give back to our community. I believe we really need to tap into our community for substitute teachers. You don't have to be a licensed teacher to sub, and I think we have grandparents, parents, stay-at-home moms and dads, aunts and uncles, and people in the community that we should really tap into to bring in to be substitutes for us.
It's a pandemic. There's a staffing issue everywhere. I own a business. It's same issues. You know, I think we get the best substitutes that are available that are out there. We do a good job of that. As far as compensating, we did raise that a year, two years ago, maybe. We are comparably, but we're not the highest, and there are other districts that pay more than we do. So it's tough to get that. But right now, it's just a labor shortage, and it's tough. It's tough. So we've just got to keep after it.
All right. So I just found out right now how much we pay our substitutes, because I did not know, right? Hadley was going to do it for free, actually, as well, I also found out, which is admirable. I never thought to volunteer, you know, to come in and deal with a bunch of students, because I'm a pretty good, I can teach someone how to do something one-on-one, but you give me this 29 students in a room, and I'd probably go crazy. So it's a tough job that our teachers do, and it's probably tough to come into a room full of students that maybe aren't going to give you the same level of respect that they give to the real teacher. I mean, I was in high school once, and maybe an idiot sometimes, and I was probably guilty of it myself. It's probably tough to come in and sub sometimes, right? Especially with COVID running rampant. You know, there's a lot of people that might be looking to sub that might not be looking to sub for the last two years, right? So the level of compensation, sounds like it's in line with other districts. It's probably worth looking at, but we may find ourselves not in the same position of struggling to get substitute teachers after we've cleared a little bit more of this pandemic. Would be my anticipation.
Thank you. Do you think is a priority for the district to complete the high school athletic complex?
I'm up. Tough question to start with. Is it a priority? That's kind of a subjective word there, and I'll take the position of saying, you know, I think it is very important that we finish the athletic community. I will tell you, our kids are, how's a good way to say it? We don't just teach our kids in the four walls of a classroom. What we're trying to do is empower them to go out to the four corners of the world and see it, experience it, and be a part of it. Athletics are a part of it. Curriculum, artistic, athletics, the community at large, it's all a part of learning. It's just not in the brick and mortar that we're sitting in here tonight. I think it is very important that we do complete the athletic complexes here in the school, make them as good as we possibly can to the dollars that we have in our budget, keep them as safe as we can and as inviting as possible, because if they are... keep them as safe as we can and as inviting as possible because if they are, that invites the community to come in. It just isn't the kids. It's the parents, it's the grandparents, it's the corporations wanting to be a part of it and be involved in an event, in an activity. So I will go down as saying that, yeah, I really do think it's one of the top, you know, five, six priorities. We need to finish here in our community.
I'm going to take a page out of your book. My answer is yes.
Yes, yes, that's my answer as well. It's not just an athletic complex, it's, it's an outdoor classroom. Courtney, Ms. Davis actually talked about teaching the values and, losing the word here that you'd said, but how to deal with conflict. I mean, they can learn this on the, on the field, how to play well together, how to resolve a conflict, especially if you're playing a pickup game or something, but it, it's critical. That, that needs to happen.
All right. So full disclosure, I coach youth football, so of course I want the athletic complexes finished, right? Priority is a tricky word. You know, there's a lot of things that are probably priorities, but if everything becomes a priority, then, then nothing's a priority, right? So I'd like to see it completed, but that's probably more of just a, you know, I coach youth, I, I would coach at the high school except Coach Hay already has a very complete staff that already know more about football than me, or else I would try and be there as well, right? But yeah, it's, we'd all like to see it completed. We got to figure out how to do it. I noticed a scoreboard that doesn't have advertising on it and I go to Highland and there's a big thing that says Bill Jack over it. I don't know if we have naming rights to the stadium or the, you know, whatever. There's, there's a lot of opportunities that I think we could bring in funds to finish some of those things and I don't know that we've explored them all.
I'll fall back on what everyone else has said in terms of it being a, a tight word to say that it's priority. I, it's definitely up there. I think that it's important for our students and us as a community to say that we start something, we finish it. And even all the way down at the Little League level, the comments from surrounding communities in, in terms of how amazing our facilities are from Little League all the way up and that overall pride that you feel of, you know, having that appearance and also making sure that the students have those resources and what they need to, to finish academically from the sports standpoint. So I do think it's very important that we do finish it and like the others have said, it may not be number one priority, but it's definitely on the top of the list.
Thank you. How would you propose the district fund the completion of the baseball fields?
I think I'm in a really unique position being the Chamber of Commerce president here in Talmage. So I have had the pleasure to sit down and speak with the plan coordinators that are working on this exact issue. We are looking to enlist some of our local businesses, as Todd had mentioned, in a capital campaign so that we can get that funding and get it done with our community. And I heard a new thing today at lunch with Steve Wood, that he's going to be reaching out to alumni as well and I think that's a really great idea. He had mentioned how he gets a postcard from Rutgers where he got his MBA asking for funding and he said, why don't I get one from my high school? He said, I would be much more willing to give money to my high school where I know where it's going to and the district that needs my help. So I think there's some great ideas that are already in the works to fund our, fund our completion, so I'm very excited.
Yeah, being part of this from its inception, there is a great campaign in place and there's some people already working on it diligently. We've also done a feasibility study to make sure that our efforts aren't in vain, that when we go out to the, to the public for, for donations and things of that nature, that we can reach the goals to be able to build this facility and, and complete it as we want to complete it without adding additional costs to the, to the school district. So we're, we're pretty excited about that.
Sounds to me like this one's already handled.
I would agree with what Todd hit on in terms of looking for sponsors and some advertising to try and help with that. And this kind of, it's slightly off subject, but also hits the point as well. This is the, the beauty of not only this board that we're hope, that we're in, we're seeking for a position on, but the community, community as a whole is that we don't all have answers or knowledge for something. And that's why it would be a pleasure to work with Megan, who has all of that experience and that knowledge and she brings forth some of that information. So it's always good to help rely on each other. So I agree with the fundraising aspect and possibly that, and then some of the great ideas that Megan has brought forward too.
The completion of the, according to the question, is the district fund the completion of the baseball field? And as you're hearing, it's really not a district, district-funded activity, it's really a community-funded activity. There's a capital campaign that's in place and we have been doing behind-the-scenes discussions and meetings that you've been hearing a little bit about, actually for a couple of years. It's a $3 million project, that's our goal. When it's complete, not only will it be the baseball field, the new baseball field that you see up on South Monroe, but it'll be a completion of a few little things for the girl softball field, it'll be a few extra little things for the football field, but it's also going to dip down into the middle school and elementary school campus here to finish off the couple of complexes that they have done there also. So this is just not a one-field program project. It's multiple fields, multiple complexes that'll be able to be used, not just by the students here, but also by, you know, people in the Little League as an example. And so all inviting, it's going to be a very good project and will be funded, you know, we cross our fingers by the community leadership here and it'll be a wonderful facility to, to complete the overall project that we started, again, some 15, 20 years ago. Done.
Thank you. And we have one last question from the live stream. Would you support naming rights to the football stadium or baseball slash softball to reduce the cost?
Absolutely. In fact, there's even been discussions about it. So yeah, there's, if you're thinking it, it's probably already been discussed with our, with our group. So absolutely.
I would agree and I would even more so agree if it was a Talmage-based name or something that I think we can all can relate to as a community, but yes.
Yes, I agree. Again, the, the capital campaign is well in place, has been well thought through and it is well in motion. Most capital campaigns, if you may or may not be aware, they are about 80% complete behind closed doors. All these conversations are going on to be sure we have the money in place, naming rights where they need to be. Hopefully, absolutely, the Talmage name would just be perfect there, but at the same time, I'll bet you Mr. Hostetler would not turn a check down from just about anybody at this point in time. However, I, I, I would accept namings, naming for everything from the field to the front doors to the side seats, anything that will bring dollars in, that helps our community, that helps our schools, I think is a benefit because the trickle-down comes down to the students and that's paramount.
I'll just reiterate what Mark said because like I said, I'm in a unique situation where I have been able to talk, you know, be in some of these conversations. And so yes, I absolutely think the naming rights should be, be available.
Thank you all for coming. Please remember to vote on November 2nd or via absentee or early voting. This concludes our forum.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.[1787.76][1787.76]